recorded East Greenwood Central School District meeting in order. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I want to begin this meeting with some tragic news. A member of our community, Quadir Hoffler from the class of two thousand and twenty-two tragically passed away recently on Monday. And he graduated from Columbia High School in two thousand and twenty-two. He leaves behind a family, four siblings, three of which attend school here in our district. One at golf, two at golf and one at J and A. And we wanted to do a home in the silence for the sake of Quadir. We're going to begin this meeting hearing from our student council, Cole Hardy and Nicole Crisanda. Just just Cole today.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you're all having a fantastic week. This weekend's student council, we loaded on our March on this year weekdays and discussed purchasing materials to create impact for sale. Sure, everyone enjoyed it on the bottom. And we also wrapped up our Super Bowl canned food drive today. And let's go to share that we collected over three hundred and fifty cans. Support those in a huge thank you to everyone. On last Friday on our half day, we also hosted a hot chocolate stamp to spread joy and help improve our schools and climate. Thank you to everyone who also supported that event. And then we're excited about all the ideas we're working on for the next couple of months and we can't wait to share them with you guys. Wish you guys rest a great rest of your week. And if we don't see you, be sure to come out and support some of the players as they'll be performing each of the woods on March twenty eighth. I'm sorry, February twenty eighth, twenty ninth and first.
We're going to move on to the approval of the January fifteenth meeting minutes. On the fifteenth, we had Miss O'Brien and Miss Comerkey were absent. And we do have enough to pass. Is there a motion to pass the meeting minutes? Miss Van Orton, is there a second? Miss Turner, all in favor? And all abstaining? And no's no's all right. So yeah, Michelle. Jane abstaining. We're going to move on to the approval of the meeting minutes for the twenty second. And I forgot to mention this time that caucus is out today. So. So for the for the twenty second, everyone was here. Do we have a motion to 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 pass the meeting minutes? Sorry, I should ask before that, any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Phillips, is there a second? There's O'Brien, I'm all in favor. Everyone's. Any abstentions? Okay, no, no, it's all right. Okay, so we're going to move on to the board forums. I'm going to start on my left, Miss Van Orton.
I'm all set.
All right. All right. We're gonna start with our.
So we've McDonald is running late, so that's why I'm looking at my phone. He's kept, he'll let us know when he's going to be on the meeting. That's my justice. He's not on the meeting yet. He's joining us via.
I didn't know if he'd be in person or.
So we're going to open up to our public forum and I'mma read our, I don't know if it's called a preamble, but residents, students, employees and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations of the district. Other than matters involving personnel, members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or the superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered inflammatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Do anyone have a comment? Right, nothing? Right? Okay, so so we'll move on to discussion items and a superintendent search survey. I did want to provide a quick update. Before moving forward on the superintendent search. So so as an update, our our search brochure, application and video outlining our position are currently available on the East Greenwood Central School District website. At egcSD dot org backslash superintendent search. Advertising began on January twenty-third on the following sites. Association of Education Services Agencies, Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, Association of School Business Officials, New York. Of New York State, National Association of Black School Educators, New York State Council of School Superintendents. New York State School Boards Association, New York State Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. Olas. And School Score Administrators Association of New York State, the School Superintendent's Association. Our position was also shared on Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, Questar three, both see site. And that's the the range of places that that we posted it. Let's see here. The deadline for applications is February twenty-second. And additionally, we we did, we did have the the community survey survey that went out and we ended up having several responses. And I think that's that's what we're going to discuss.
More than a thousand.
More than, yeah, absolutely. About like like twelve hundred or so responses. And and we we are also going to discuss about releasing the survey results. And then having a discourse about what measure should we release? So 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 within the survey, we asked the community for a lot of feedback about, you know, what what we were looking for in a future superintendent. How are we doing as a district? And we got a lot of feedback, comments. And and there was discussion and we wanted to discuss publicly about how much should we release? Should we redact items with names? Should we release the full everything? Should we release items that pertain specifically just to the questions if they went outside the scope? Should we exclude it completely? So we wanted to discuss the board's position publicly about how much of the survey we wish to release. And I want to just open it up for and 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 I don't know if if we felt like we wanted to have a public discussion, if we just wanted to vote on it or, you know, but want to open it up. Yes, Mr. Man.
So I believe that the choices we had were, release the whole report in its entirety.
Yeah.
Released or just the executive summary? Release just the information responses to the questions. And then the last one was release it, but redact anything that had a name.
Absolutely.
I think we're the four choices that the board was offered. Um, you know, and we asked specific questions on the survey. Question responses that we received that had nothing to do with any of our questions. I don't believe should be released. They're not hurting. If if we asked one question on that survey and we asked, what color is the sky?
Yeah.
And a thousand people said blue. And fifteen hundred people responded, my car is red. How is that pertinent relative to the questions that we asked? It is not. So why would we post it? Why would we put on our on our website when it means nothing, has nothing to do with what we asked? Put the responses to the questions that we asked. The executive summary sums up the entire survey, very nice job, right? We all read it. Um, and that is my fault is to release the executive summary. Um, you know, we we used other districts as examples about being transparent. Well, those other districts didn't even release the results of their entire survey. At all, they just mentioned they had it. So if we're going to release more than the executive summary, then okay, release the responses that pertained to the questions that we asked. If it is not a response to a question that we asked, it has no business going out there because it's irrelevant to what we asked the community for.
I want I want to begin to to your comments a little bit. I I I share some of the sentiment that you have, although I'm in favor of releasing the the results to the community. And I don't know, and I wanted to ask was is some of which are are you worried at all about how it may detract from the superintendent search process? Like, I'm wondering, like, when you say.
It's not relevant.
Okay, okay.
It's not relevant to the superintendent. The superintendent search was, we asked these specific questions.
Yes.
Those answers are irrelevant. They don't matter to what we ask the community to do. I've been in favor of releasing.
Yes.
Right, but just not releasing the questions that are irrelevant to or the responses that don't have anything to do with what we asked. So I guess my question would be, why would we release it? What relevance does it have to the survey?
Yes, yes.
What relevance does it have to the question we asked of? You know, the various questions we asked on the survey.
Yes.
So, you know, release the executive summary, release the responses to the questions. Um, I believe that we should redact names because I don't think it's fair to some individuals. Okay, but to release comments that have nothing to do with what we asked is just irrelevant to what we asked for. It has no bearing on what we're looking for in a new superintendent.
Yeah, so so and I don't want to.
Mark, I totally hear where you're coming from. I think my my preference would be to release it with the names redacted only because we asked for community input. This is what this is how his community members did respond. I don't know if it's our place to pick and choose, you know, and it could be that there was an interpret.
We're releasing the responses to the questions we asked.
But those are responses to questions they're asked.
Some of them, some of them are not.
But we asked the community to participate and I think this was their option to participate.
The questions that we asked.
Response.
So it's irrelevant to what we asked them to do.
But it's relevant to the community in some way and they wanted to be heard. We asked.
We asked them questions.
Right.
If you ask them, what color is the sky? And people answered, my truck is this color. How is that relevant to what we asked?
It's not necessarily relevant, but perhaps it's important to that particular taxpayer. And I think the majority are not going to read it. We, you know, it's it's a long.
If there's nothing to read it, why are we even putting it out there then?
Because then we're not, we're not hiding anything. We're not, you know, we're putting it all out there. If they want the information, they're readily able to read it. If they don't want to, they can read the executive summary. They don't want to do that. They don't have to read it at all.
No, I I think that's one of my my points of view too is that, right? Culture matters, not just what we put out there, but how we do things matter. And I think, you know, representing that, you know, we're not trying to hide away from nothing. And and the truth is.
But what are we trying to hide?
No, it's it's not that.
What are we trying to hide?
It's not that we are.
We ask people input on.
Yes.
What they want to see in a new superintendent.
Yes, but if.
If somebody puts something that's totally irrelevant to that.
Yes. I understand your perspective.
It's not.
Yes.
It has no bearing on what we ask the community to do.
The the challenge is though, Mark, is that, right? If if we hold it back in a community that don't know what is missing, right? It leaves too much to perception of what they don't know. And and I think part of it is to have confidence moving forward that we all are on the same page together, right? They're looking at the same thing that we are looking at. We don't have no more information than they have. You know, I think just as a message, you know, is is an important message. And 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 I think aside from that, I think too, right? If we use it to inform future decisions, just being on the same page, you know, and saying, looking forward to new superintendent could come. He probably will have it anyway, but I think it keeps the community in the loop on that perspective.
Agreed. Release the information for the questions that we asked.
Okay.
I mean, we can, we can argue about.
For sure, for sure, for sure, for sure.
So.
Keep going.
Yes.
And I need you to struggle a little bit with that for a little different reason.
Yeah.
I think it's going to distract some of the.
That's my concern.
You know.
Yeah.
It it isn't relevant. And so is it going to distract and bring up history that doesn't really need to be brought up because it has no bearing? But I do understand, you know, being transparent and, you know, I appreciate that. But I I do, I do struggle with it as well because I I feel like it brings up stuff that is literally no, I mean, five years ago. Um, and that's, that's a little bit of a struggle for me. But again, we shouldn't be the ones to judge it.
Yes.
That so if you start doing that, then we're judging and then we have a a challenge with being honest and, you know, and making decisions on our own. So I I think I understand that.
I I agree a hundred percent with that point. And and I'll tell you, when I was reading it, like for me, like what kind of alleviated it for me was that I noticed largely there was like thematic sections where they they all fell into like one of six or seven boxes, right? And I just felt like even forgetting about the very specific context, it was like, well, if you look at this box, it's kind of not that bad, right? It's just a box, you know? And it's in and and I thought it would be useful looking forward, you know, at these as boxes and saying like, hey, whether it's a specific response or not, like it's it still gives us some insight, you know, for what we want to look out for, things we might need to address. Because truth is perceptions are things we're supposed to be managing as well, you know? So I think that even though it might not be pertinent, you know, it was relevant to figuring out, you know, our path moving forward. And that's, that's, you know, that's where I was. But, okay, and and let's vote on the release of the survey. All that are in favor of.
Are you releasing?
Yes.
There's a, there's a, there's an item on the resolution.
Okay, okay.
Based on the, some of the informal discussions that the board has had up to the meeting. I put on the agenda, resolutions to approve the public release of the survey with the names redacted.
Yeah.
It seems that my, that was my impression that that is the majority of the boards.
Yes.
So if you approve, if you move to nine A and approve that resolution, then we would take action tomorrow to work with Dan Sherman. From Questar and Mark Man, your Mark and Mark Adam from our from our public information office and to release.
Okay.
Cover letter from Mr. Temple and the survey in the form that the board majority approves.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. All right. So moving on to our next discussion item, the projected enrollment report for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. On Mr. Simon's.
Uh, yes, just briefly, we had a BRAC meeting last week and annually we have provided the board and the community with a enrollment rejection study. It's done by the Capitol District Regional Planning Commission. I encourage everyone in the community to read this. There's some great information that we get to help us do our long range planning. Um, the enrollment production study uses a common method out. We've used in school districts called the birth rate survival cohort method. And it takes, for example, children that are born uh, in our school district based on New York State Department of Health data. This year it projects out five years. What is our kindergarten class size going to look like? There's a ratio that's used if it's one, it means our kindergarten class five years from now had the same number of kids that were born this year. If it's more than one, it means people are moving into the dead with school age children. So um, a very useful tool to plan enrollment, class sizes, facilities, budget. Uh, we are one of the few districts in upstate New York with a stable enrollment. Where many districts have declined in their enrollment. Ours is slightly increasing over the next five years. Next year projecting our kindergarten classes, registration process has just started. We're projected to receive approximately fifty-five more students next year in kindergarten than we have in this year. We'll have to see if that holds true. I know that the red mill occurred yesterday. Yesterday, and they are up compared to prior years as well as green metal. So we're working through that process. There's also very interesting housing market analysis information in the survey that shows that everybody knows that home prices have gone up everywhere, but they've gone up significantly over the last ten years with the mean price of of purchasing an existing home. There's information from our building permits for development of new homes. And you can see that in some of the tables, I don't have the cost gone up, but the amount of time that the house remains on the market is very, very well. It looks like nineteen days or something.
Yeah.
Something between eighteen and nineteen days. Um, it's a challenging housing market.
Yeah.
Um, right now, but we're, we're a stable district. We have a few markets coming over the next five years. Um, we had a trend going around up to two thousand and really sixteen, where the moment have been declining, but over the last several years, we have been stable and slightly increasing. So it's good information to have that. So I encourage everybody to read it and we wanted the board to have a copy.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Can I ask one question about, it looks like on the UPK, we could see a pretty good jump from this year to next year? Is that?
I'm gonna let Jen take that question. We added UPK last year and this year is the first time we did it.
Okay.
And we tried to assume any, any students that were eligible.
So yeah, okay.
Going, going ahead.
Yeah, so.
Four years.
Right, because we don't have full capacity for UPK. So one of the things we asked them to look at is to include our enrollments over the last few years that we've been offering UPK. And then show us what the capacity is like, which is basically another cohort of students similar to kindergarten. So then that way we could evaluate that trend and see what the need potentially could be. So it's not a true enrollment projection. It's more of a capacity look at it as to what the eligible group is.
Thank you.
A good number for advocacy conversations.
Absolutely.
No, no news yet.
Uh, Mr. McDonald is scheduled to be on around seven thirty, a few more minutes.
Okay. So let's go on to the resolution to approve the public release of the superintendent's search survey with names redacted. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Phillips, the second, Ms. Turner, all in favor? And well, I'm sorry, but um, and all abstaining? No's? Mr. Man is.
But I want it on the record.
Yes.
That I am voting no.
Yes.
To the release with redacted names that I support the release of the superintendent's search to the community with the pertinent responses for the questions that we asked.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Thank you, Justin.
Okay. And moving on to approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Man, is there a second? Miss Comerkey, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. Resolution to approve the site work for replacement of Columbia High School tennis courts and basketball courts and in the roofing biz for capital project phase one. Um, did we want to?
Yeah, we have our construction team here.
Yeah.
Uh, and I want to thank Paul Pickle, Jennifer Mulligan. I want to thank our representatives from La Della, Post Polly Marchese, Devin Talberg. I don't know if you've met Devin before, Devin, can you give us a way? It's also one of the architects with March and James Thomas for an exceptional job they did. Organizing the bid request for proposals as well as reviewing the bids. We do a lot of bidders and happy to say that based on our prior pre referendum estimates, these bids in total came in about one point, one million dollars less than what we budgeted. So too early to spend that money, to be honest, we have to wait till we get to later phases of the project. The HVAC and the air conditioning is going to get complicated a little bit. We may have unforeseen conditions, but we were at a good starting point because we had a lot of bidders. People are interested in our project and it came in under the estimates that were prepared prior to the referendum. So all good news. So thanks for, thanks, thanks to the team.
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
Towards the front of golf, right?
Is there a motion to approve, Mr. Man? Is there a second? Ms. Turner, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. And moving on to propose change in policy. Um, second reading of policy for six two four zero for investments. Uh, this is the second reading that that you want to discuss this early.
Yeah, I'd like Jen to kind of summarize where where we're going with our investment policy because there's another item related to that. So our banking depositories.
I can, if I can, I can just speak to them in concert with each other. Um, so this is the second reading of our investment policy. A couple of things, the main objectives that we were looking to do that was reviewed by the finance and audit committee. Um, we've been talking about this for probably about a year. Um, so we were able to get through and update our investment policy to allow some other investment options as well as provide opportunities to authorize additional additional depositories to maximize any investment earnings that we have. So there hasn't been any changes to the um, the policy since the first reading. Um, the second resolution is to expand. Currently, we have one approved depository, which is KeyBank. Um, so this is a list of banks that we've been partnering with three plus one that they typically get a lot of free quotes through. Um, so we can bid to have some, you know, more competition with our investment rates. And then also the one area that we've been underperforming on is investing like cash that is available on a weekly basis. So we're looking to have some other options to be able to invest that those funds, which will maximize earnings even further. Um, we did look at all the banks. They're all institutions that are under approved in New York State to operate in New York State. We also looked at their Vera Bank ratings to make sure that there are banks that have uh, financial stability. If they follow the news a few years ago, you know, there were banks that, you know, were not necessarily as stable and had failed. So, you know, that is something that we are looking at and monitoring. Um, so we're, we're excited to possibly be able to move forward and generate additional earnings for the district.
Thank you, Ms. Mulligan. Um, I I do have a a comment on the depositories and, um, you know, the the challenges that I have is just that managing bank accounts, bank access, funding transfers. And I know we have a vendor managing that process, but it is something involved.
So, yeah, so I can actually talk a little bit because one of the things that we don't want to do is to create an immense administrative burden of having multiple bank accounts.
Yeah.
So we'll be looking for opening one or two institutions that we can use more operating, you know, daily, weekly cash flow that we're not changing our primary banking relationship at this point in time. We would need to go through an RFP process, which would be very involved. Um, so our primary banking institution where our payroll, our vendor payment. Um, so our primary banking institution where our payroll, um, our vendor payments. Um, our deposits will still all be run through KeyBank at this point in time. But what we'll be able to do is be able to look at um, other money market, reciprocal deposit arrangement. Or um, an investment pool through my class or Nylaf and if we have a couple million dollars, we can sit it there. And then bring the money back in to um, to make payroll. Right now, that type of money that's sitting there that we can't invest in a long-term basis in US Treasury Bill for. Thirty, sixty, ninety days is not earning any funds right now because we're not getting the return, any, any return at all. You know, from our current banking relationship. So this is going to expand that opportunity to be able to earn on those balances. Um, which, you know, um, is going to increase our investment earnings. So we're not looking to, you know. Any other um, diversification will begin with way quotes to do some additional CDs. So instead of picking a US Treasury bill that's um, returning four and a quarter percent, perhaps there's a difference. He out there that might be returning four point four percent, you know, and that will help maximize that.
Um, will you be managing the flow of funds and in add of these bank accounts or is the?
Our treasurer, the vendor is just providing us data liquidity analysis.
Okay.
And they're providing some um, information on benchmarking.
Yeah.
And helping us see where those opportunities are.
Okay, so, so where are doing the management?
Oh, yes. No, but there's no authority for that vendor to have any custody of the district.
Okay, and are, are there any questions on? And we need a resolution to pass the second reading and, and also, yeah, okay, so, so is there? Any questions or comments? Was there a motion to pass the second reading? Right, Ms. Turner, is there a second? Ms. Comersky, all in favor? Everyone's in favor? And if there are motion to pass the uh, approval of the additional depositories for district funds? Ms. Van Orton, in the second, Ms. Phillips, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes.
Checking in, Mr. Goodwin, I don't believe that Sammy McDonald is on yet. We'll keep proceeding.
Keep going.
It is budget season, right?
Usually is in three places at once.
Resolution to authorize the correction of tax rolls, Ms. Mulligan.
This is a uh. This is a correction that we do annually when we are notified by. Uh, the municipalities that we serve, that there was an error, for example, an error in calculation that might be related to an exception that was not noted or. Um, calculation errors, I will report these corrections back to the county. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm talking about the, these, this is a report that goes back to the county, the correction of the tax.
Yes, yes, sometimes there's some minor corrections in the assessments or um, maybe a small challenge that happened and. In the quarter in between when the final assessment.
Is there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Phillips, a second. Ms. O'Brien, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. And we're down to committee reports, Mr. Marty Mahar.
Yes, thanks, Jesse. So I'll be quick because it's only one page with large font. January eighth meeting, we've hired one TA green, uh, Jenny, excuse me. One speech teacher, half a time DPS in District Wide, one AS reading teacher at Belltop. One occupational therapy assistant, one senior monitor at Goff Middle School, one monitor at DPS. Two school bus drivers and good news is. They're going to be approved tonight. Hopefully it'll all say yes. This will make all of our bus routes fully staff. So we're at a good place and then we're going to build up our reserve of substitute. Uh, bus drivers or substitute, we're doing very well. We've since the last uh, time that I updated. Nine additional substitute teachers. Nine substitute aides, three substitute monitors. One substitute custodial worker, one substitute registered school nurse. And one substitute school bus driver. And lastly, we did replace our music choral director at Columbia. And as Paul Hardy, the student council, council president mentioned. The musical is on Friday, February twenty-eighth at seven PM and. Saturday, March first, that's probably high school. And that concludes my report. That's only a half. So we're, we're going to move forward with these. We're doing very well. So many few like automotive mechanic. At the transportation department, a cook at Columbia High School, custodial worker at Belltop. Food service helper at Goff Middle School and Red Mill. And the senior monitor at. Howard Alga Middle School. There's three positions there. And in the works, we have some typists that we have already interviewed and they will be on the next agenda.
So I was whispering to Mr. Temple that uh, the audience member, who may nameless works for us noted that we may. In my thinking of the construction team, I may have distracted the board from approving the resolution to award the bid, so we need to go.
This is a great report and one of the things that Marissa was starting to do before she left us was. Give us more sort of like macro summary information of just like, you know, total workforce vacancies. I think that might be helpful if we could have that part of. Incorporate into the agenda as we really get into the budget process. So Marty, I don't know if that's something you can help us compile. It doesn't need to be every meeting, but maybe even like. Once a month or something like that.
All right, and going back to the resolution to approve the uh, the, the work in, in the phase one A. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Man?
Okay, so Mark is first.
So we're going to reschedule a seven noon McDonald. He's running late and he doesn't think he'll. Be able to make it within the context of our meeting time. So Peter is kind of handling texting with his uh, assistant. So can you let her know that we'll have him on for the next meeting?
Sure.
Sorry about that.
So there were no table motions, right? No old, does any old business anyone? All right, hold on, yes. I just flew by committee reports. All right, Ms. Mulligan.
Okay, so we had the long range facilities planning um, meeting, also known as BRAC. Um, Mr. Simons talked about the enrollment protection report. That was a big uh, subject matter. And then we also had a capital project update. Which was literally the day before we opened the bid. So we talked about that. And we also um, gave some updates um, regarding just the construction timeline for phase one A. Which will start in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Um, and also we talked about um, phase one B and what that looks like in terms of the athletic field improvements on behind the golf. Um, and then for uh, phase one A, we're actually looking to start construction um, as soon as April fourteenth.
April fourteenth for the tennis court, it's April twenty-first for the exterior basketball court.
We want the May flowers. So um, so that was our long range facility planning meeting. Any questions on that? Um, next we had our health insurance review committee um, meeting, which is um, the representatives of that committee are um, internal administration and. Uh, members of each of our um. Uh, collective bargaining units. Um, and one of the things we usually have Amsher come in, we had a report. Uh, we have an annual report from Highmark on some key medical, um, just demographic information on utilization. Um, and on prescription drug on utilization. Of course, you know, the, the healthcare, you know, industry costs are continuing to rise. Um, and one of the predominant um, issues we talked about is in the prescription drug area. Um, we're seeing um, very high uh, cost increases. Um, and through the Kasha Consortium, which um, East Green Bush is a member of that um, consortium of. About twenty-two districts throughout the capital district. Um, we're looking at different ways to help mitigate some of that. And one of the um, areas that we're looking at is a free market health, which is a way to shop. Uh, prescription drugs to get better pricing on them. Um, so we are working um, with the collective bargaining units. Um, Cash is working with leaders of NISA, um, Sanes and CSEA to um, develop an MOA to allow. Um, you know, that free market health to come into um, our prescription drug plan.
I got a question about that. Would, would free market health plan make it more expensive for subsets? Of um, beneficiaries um, who purchases on certain prescription medications? And I'm just wondering that like, what's the net impact at the end of the day for um, our district?
So the preliminary um, data, and of course, it's always based on utilization. So it's not, you know, it's a projection.
Yeah.
Is that there could be savings of about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars annually. Um, basically, there are already pre-authorizations that exist within our uh, prescription drug plan.
Where are the savings, like where are the savings? Like what is the driver of the savings?
It's the shopping of the drugs through different manufacturers.
Okay, okay.
Through different vehicles that would provide but more competition, better pricing. Um, so the free market help has to put some parameters within the prescription job plan in order to allow that um, shopping to happen.
Okay, excellent.
So, so really, it's, it's basically competition and um, one of the things, one of, you know. There's just a few drugs that had high utilization and that may have not necessarily have a. A medical necessity and it's like looking at that.
And would there be an impact like at, at all from that structure? I'm just wondering like, would there be any expected impact? On a beneficiary under that plan versus the plan that we currently?
So um, there's details of a memorandum agreement that are being worked out, you know, between Kasha and um, the bargaining units.
Okay.
Um, to minimize any impact to those, but at the end of the day, the uh. We have pre-authorization on a lot of our drugs.
Yeah.
So there'll be a um, a handful more that would be included in that bucket to provide some. Guide rail, guardrails and, and many providers don't. They don't know from plan to plan who has, you know, these different parameters built in. So providers are used to having to go through a pre-authorization process. In order to have, you know, a script approved. So one of the um, other components is um, we did talk about our prescription drug premiums. Um. We are anticipating a significant increase in our prescription drugs. Uh, what we saw just in the first six months of. Um, this fiscal year is about a half a million dollars that we um, basically had a deficit on that plan. In other words, premiums are not covering our claim expenses. Um, we're expecting that trend to continue. Which will um, put us below a, um, a floor of a four-month. Reserve that we need to have on hand to manage because we're self-insured. So an, an increasing claims, we need to be able to have something to be able to balance that. So we're um, going to be below that by the end of the year. So we're looking at a combination of making sure that we have. Um, an appropriate level, um, as well as just covering current.
Medication that claims are being put in for are not covered by our plans or just the price of?
The utilization and the cost.
And the high cost.
And the high cost drugs.
Yeah.
So I mean, there are some drugs that, you know, cost thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Mm-hmm.
Or more.
I'm assuming GLP.
Yes.
Yep, that is a big, big driver. I think um, in the data we saw. Um, so GLP's didn't, GLP ones didn't exist a couple of years ago and their utilization has gone up a lot. And there's no particular. Guide rails around that right now. Um, that alone, there was about five hundred thousand dollars in claims. Um, in a recent twelve month period. For that alone.
I, I do want to say, I am a bit worried and I don't want to sound alarmist, you know, but just prospectively, right? Thinking two, three, five years out, you know, seeing. Right pressures on, on health insurance, stable enrollment, you know, we have projections of increased costs over the horizon. And um, and. By my position, I want to preserve, right, every position. You know, also, and, and we're not in the space of, but I'm just saying like, like, that's my worry. I want to make sure we're doing our utmost to protect every. Thing we can within the district and um, but when you look at the numbers, right, there's reason to. Yes, so.
Certainly is. We're going to be sharing those preliminary budget estimates. On our expense side of the budget at the first March meeting and the health insurance line is going to go up significantly.
Um, Ms. Mulligan, I just have a question. I'm sure. I'm sure we're not the only district dealing with this issue. Do we know what our neighboring districts are doing to address that?
And well, that's part of the Kasha. So this free market health, we're looking at it holistically, all the districts, basically, you know, many of the suburban council districts in the capital district.
Okay.
I think that's my biggest challenge is that it's largely a macro picture, right? When we look at inflation, that like, I think every picture nationally. From order and muscle funding, not to, but I think, you know, that it's going to be harder to control and like, that's my concern.
And that's what we're looking to see what tools can we deploy to help manage it.
Yeah.
And that's what one of the, the free market help and it's small in relation to what our total spend is. But it's something and just as a step forward to help mitigate and um. Try to, you know, manage the costs are going to go up. It's not going to prevent, it's not going to bring our costs down. But how much they increase, that could help um, bring that to be not as high.
And Jennifer mentioned, uh, NICE is, rather than having individual districts have to go negotiate with the teachers union and. With SRP, which is coordinated personnel and other groups, um. They're handling this collectively for all of the, all of the bargaining. Groups and the districts that are part of the cash association. So far, the feedback's been positive.
Mr. Styles with the curriculum committee report.
Thank you, um. I'll be quick since Ms. Mulligan took most of my time. Uh, so we had a uh, CCS committee meeting. Uh, last Wednesday, February fifth, um, we did meet virtually for that meeting. We received an update on two of our program reviews, one for physical education and the other one for health from Mr. Hosley. Uh, they're well on their way doing, doing the work that they need to do uh, to be prepared for their curriculum review to um. You know, get finalized by the end of the school year. They plan on using a lot of time on the March thirty-first professional development day to get together as a group. And work through some of the things in that review. They've also used some, some time already, um, you know, earlier this year. I gave an update regarding some of the work that we're doing around, around literacy within the district. Um, you know, I thought it was important because a lot of information is coming out from New York State Education Department around. Um, literacy, especially pre-K through grades three, um, science of reading, all the different um, kind of. I guess buzzwords that are coming out of the state right now. So uh, gave the group. An overview of a lot of the work that we've been doing. Uh, again, when people think about literacy. Many times they think about the elementary level, but we are um, you know, doing a lot of work in, in terms of literacy at the middle school and high school as well. So. Um, I gave an update regarding some of that. Uh, Ms. Mahar um, discussed some of that work. As, as well as Ms. Austin Bauer and Ms. Um, Ms. Mathis. Uh, so a lot of really great work is going on in literacy in the district. Give a brief update regarding uh, UPK and our. Um, uh, lottery, lottery enrollment. So on uh, last week, we had a hundred and thirty-three. Students already registered for the lottery. This morning, when I checked. This morning when I checked, I think we're at a hundred and forty-seven. It is open through the end of this month. Last year, in the lottery, I think we had about a hundred and ninety students that entered the lottery, so I would probably anticipate that number to be pretty close to that again, and you know, currently, you know, again, budget approval, you know, pending, we would be having a hundred and sixty-five spots available. Mr. Goodwin, I asked him if he could give a little update to the committee regarding the three through eight computer based testing simulation that we did, this is something that we did last year as well with the fifth grade and eighth grade. This is through New York State. We this year are going to be computer based testing all of our students, grades three through eight. So all the schools were able to participate. Last year, you know, the feedback from the, from the schools and the principals and from Mr. Goodwin was it was just a really good exercise to go through, you know, students are able to get, you know, a feel. Again, work is also going on within, you know, the classrooms during the year to get students comfortable with computer based, computer based testing. But really the schools were able to, you know, get, get a feel of, you know, the needs and on the technology department. You know, through Mr. Goodwin, really making sure that we have the infrastructure to support, you know, all of that work. Uh, given, again, an update regarding some professional development, we did have a PD day last Friday, which was a half, half day. A lot of that work on the half days that we, when we have those half days built in is really just around, you know, giving departments time to do the work that they need and, you know, schools and grade levels. We usually don't get together as a whole district, just, you know, timing and it's, you know, it's a short time, so a lot of that work is really done within this, within each of those schools. Uh, we have two additional professional development days remaining, we're participating in the Questar Regional Professional Development Day on March fourteenth. An initial flyer has come out with that very similar setup as they've had in the last few years, a lot of virtual sessions with then some specific groups that will be meeting in person. You know, for example, they might have a session that where all the nurses that are, you know, in Questar can go and meet in person. They've had in the past, you know, some specialized maybe AP groups get together and meet, so there'll be some of that. But a majority, majority of the sessions that folks can sign up for is virtual. And then lastly, we have our March thirty first superintendent's conference day, really excited about that. So we are calling that a day of leading and learning where we've asked our staff members to put in proposals to offer professional development sessions for, you know, for our staff. We've got that day tentatively set up where we will have some time in the morning for grade levels and departments to get together, but then we'll be offering four forty-five minute sessions where again, we have our staff that can register to participate. To this point, we've had over thirty proposals already that our staff have put in to be able to put on an offer for our, you know, for our other staff members, so really excited about that day. You know, and I'd like to thank the professional development committee to, you know, help with that organization and, you know, really looking forward to that, I think that'll be a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Styles. So moving on, on this agenda, next we have Mr. Simons with the Health and Safety Committee.
Yes, we had a Health and Safety Committee meeting virtually at six o'clock on Monday, January twenty seventh. We talked about the new law regarding extreme heat conditions in the schools, which came into effect as part of the governor's budget last year. That law requires districts to have a plan in the event that room temperatures reach eighty-two degrees to implement some of the things that we already do, keeping the blinds closed, lights off, other, plenty of water for the kids. When the temperature reaches eighty-eight degrees measured in the center of the room is what the law says, you have to not utilize the space, it doesn't apply to kitchens. Which would be problematic, so we formed a little committee that Mr. Mahar is going to chair to look at that. Make sure that our procedures are identified and written down and also what would we do in the event that certain spaces cannot be utilized? So for example, the second floor at Janae, many of the rooms currently have window air conditioners, but it does get quite uncomfortable up there. The law does not require you to close schools necessarily, requires you not to utilize the space once it reach, it reaches eighty-eight degrees. So just making the committee aware of the law and we'll have a committee that's going to be working on that. Very good. At least alliance request our health and safety is going to help us out. We've been having some conversations in the county between the commissioner of mental health, Kathy Coons, Columbia High School graduate and myself, as well as other superintendents in Questar BOCs around the procedures and the processes that we utilize to make threat assessments when students are alleged to have or found to have had made a threat with a weapon. There's a threat assessment process that the schools have been trained in that we utilize. The training has been in a model from the University of Virginia that Questar BOCs has provided for all of us, we have threat assessment teams in every building. Because of the rise in these incidents in the county and really in the region, the county mental health department has been tasked by the state mental health department to come up with a threat assessment process from a mental health perspective, and so the county mental health reached out to us and said, well, what are the schools doing? We set up a meeting at Questar, which included mental health, probation department and all of the schools, as well as a countywide threat assessment management team. Talk about ways that we can close some of the gaps in the threat assessment process. So there are a number of meetings occurring now. There's a new process that's been introduced by the county to the schools that when we do a threat assessment on a child, for example, our SROs are generally involved in that. From the law enforcement perspective, that that threat assessment be reported to the county mental health at the same time. So that procedure is being put in place. The board had previously approved the awarding of bids for radios, we talked about the inventorying process that's occurring regarding replacing either models of the radio that are outdated or the need for new radios that we're all able to have the same standard. We also talked about new safety plan requirements that the board will prove this summer, which includes changing slightly some of the ways we describe some of the emergency drills, we have been utilizing this language, secure lockout. The state is now going in that direction of calling it lockout, secure lockout, so that avoids confusion with lockdown. There's some templates and some resources available through a foundation that has done national research on school safety called the I Love You Guys Foundation. We have some, we have some staff members, including Mr. Tucker, being trained in that. Workplace violence, this was our first year last year, and this was our anniversary date of completing the workplace place violent initiative and another task for our interim HR director, he's doing the annual review. And then we had our school resource officers report some of the activities that do with kids. We purchased a very inexpensive app called my ELP, it's my emergency operations plan. And it's enabled us to have the, all the emergency plans that are in the binders and in paper form in our phones. It's just basically electronic organizer and it was something that we've given to all the administrators, we've given it to some of the safety team members. And we're using it for some of our coaches now for the average school athlete, they will be getting it, they don't have it yet. We talked about the athletic and aftercoals activities, emergency plans, it was at a suburban council meeting in the last two weeks and East Green Bush was singled out for helping share our plans with other districts. You may have read in the media yesterday that the Bethlehem incident that some of our kids were involved in resulted in now the arrest of three individuals associated with it, so it was a good meeting, we covered a lot of different topics and we'll be enjoying doing the safety committee. I think Kim was part of that meeting. Kim, does you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think you did it all.
Thank you.
All right, any tabled motions, anybody? Any old business? Moving on to the consent agenda. I want to congratulate Tristan Murphy for, for getting, for participating with the New York State Band Directors Association, it's a, it's a big accomplishment towards his musicianship. Do anybody have any questions or comments about the consent agenda? All right, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Man, is there a second? Ms. Kamurski, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes.
I just want to recognize there's quite a few retirements listed, so congratulations to all of them and Tina Fazinski was one of my, one of my son's favorite teachers ever, so congratulations to her.
And the addendum, non-instruction support personnel memo. And this is, uh, okay, this is just.
These are the two additional bus drivers that Mr. Mahar referred to and a substitute that brings us up at this point in time when they start to have a permanent driver for every route that we have, but that shifts depending on what, what's going on in kitchens, people. People leaving, but I think it was hard for you. And thank Dr. McQueen and the transportation department for all their enduring to keep our buses on the road.
Is there a motion to approve? All right, Brian, is there a second? Ms. Van Orton, all in favor? Everyone's in favor, motion passes. Is there any new business, anyone? Our last public forum? And our last board forum, Ms. Phillips?
Nothing today, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I'm all set, so Mr. Man?
No, sir.
And we do have a need for executive session today?
Or discussion of issues related to collective bargaining.
Okay. Want to thank everyone for coming out and enjoying our Board of Education meeting and wish everyone a good afternoon, sure. Is there a motion to move into executives, first better adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn, Ms. Turner?
No.
You don't adjourn, okay. Motion to go into executive session, Ms. Turner, Ms. O'Brien, yes, everyone's in favor.